Um, is it, is it an option or a possibility that we do something along the lines of a more narrow rural section similar to what's out there? I think that's, that's up for discussion, so I plan for the worst case.
Because, uh, normally you put in water sewer lines and all that stuff.
And I'm sorry, yes, that, I got stuck in the road. The primary purpose would be extending sewer and water. We would be putting sewer and water into Willow Springs. That's fairly black and white, assuming we move ahead with the project, which that's up for debate. What kind of a street goes back on top of that sewer and water? Lots of discussion that should happen there, yeah.
Okay, cause that's, I'm, I'm just thinking down the road, we're probably no doubt are gonna have a meeting with the people out there because that's
Yep.
Really is a lot of mixed feelings out there, so.
Yep, and I think we had, uh, we had one meeting, did we not?
Well, we had a meeting part of annexation.
Hmm, goes for annexation. I think maybe we touched on the sewer and water, but not in detail.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, Ron, I would expect that at some point, maybe in the, the first half or certainly maybe by summertime, we would wanna have an input meeting with those property owners out there and
That'd be good.
Take the temperature.
Because they've, if they see something, holy macro, they're gonna put that road in on us, I just.
Yep, and that, and Willow Springs has been on our CIP for a long time.
And I know it has.
Yep, yep.
But because of the situation out there, you know what I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm, understood.
And John's right, if it's truly gonna be a, a next year project.
We need to get.
Like it started on it.
First half of the year would be my preference to at least have that discussion.
And for, and for the people that know that area, a lot of those people have huge lots. They maybe have a 200-foot lot of their own, then they might own two more lots the same size, and so the assessments somewhere up to 70, $80,000. And so it just, that's kinda what the.
Yeah, it'll be a, it'll be a bit of a challenge out there. The, the original Willow Springs subdivision, which is kinda right in here, those lots are pretty typical in size.
Yeah.
Um, lot smaller. As you get back into the, the Deerwood Park area, these are large lots.
That's the large ones.
You can see the difference, and that will be something that we're gonna have to work through in terms of how the, the costs are allocated between those two types of properties. I mean, they're very different, so.
Okay, thanks, John.
Any other questions by anybody? Okay, if not, then let's talk a little bit about the financial aspects.
One of the things I was gonna comment too was, um, on John's list of completed projects, uh, those were just kinda street and utility projects. We didn't even include the
Right.
$34 million wastewater treatment plant or
Airport.
$24 million airport or
Police station.
Police station, so, uh,
Yeah.
Plenty has been done in the last five years. You need to stop sharing so I can share.
I can do that. You just have to ask nice.
So, Kelsey, you're ta- you're taking over now, right?
I am.
Okay.
So for some of you, you might have sat through a presentation like this that we did. Uh, actually, first one we did, I think, was back maybe in 17, and we updated again in 19. So basically, what we're trying to do is just take that capital improvement plan that John explained, the $54 million worth of projects, and try to do a little bit of financial planning to figure out how we can actually pay for it. So a few of the things we'll go through is, uh, some financial metrics, which corresponds to that League of Minnesota Cities article that was emailed out with, uh, the draft CIP earlier today. Again, we'll kinda go through that in a little bit more detail. We'll look at basically what our baseline debt scenario is, uh, just kinda shows a maybe a snapshot of where we're at today financially. We'll add in the CIP, uh, based upon the draft that John just went over, um, and probably won't get to it today, but of course, the other part of this, uh, equation is also some of our building projects we've, are looking at doing. So, one of the first financial matrices that, that league article talks about, and the reason why I think that's important to go over is, you know, what do other people, when they look at our city, especially on a, on a bond rating, what are they looking at externally? Those who externally looking in at, at the city, what are they looking at? So one of the things they look at is basically our fund balance. Um, again, you've seen this chart before, this is something we've looked at when we do our budgeting. You know, the good news here is that, uh, we've done a good job building reserves, we got good liquidity. Uh, our, um, our policies between 35 and 50%, uh, kinda that undesigned fund balance, we're currently sitting just a little bit over 50% of our annual expenditures. Of course, Heidi's gonna jump in here if I screw this up or, or I'm way off on something.
So that's as of the end of 2019. Um, I anticipate our 2020 ending fund balance to be slightly under that 50%. If you recall, in years past, when we've had that unreserved amount, um, go over our max, you know, the, the mid-max reserve, according to our policy, we would shift some of those addition, or some of those extra funds that are over the, over and above what our policy states, over to like a capital fund where we could use those funds for one-time purchases of things, so. Um, we looked at that this fall and determined that I think we're gonna be just under that 50%. So, so far, we are not anticipating, um, any fund transfers out.
It is interesting.
Heidi, if I could, you said between 35 and 50%, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's basically, um, sorry, um, based on the state auditor's recommendations because we receive our tax, property tax settlements, and that's, you know, the majority of, of how we fund a lot of our operations. We don't receive those until June and July, so generally you'll want, you know, about half a year's worth of expenditures on hand to cash flow until you receive that first half property tax statement or settlement.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Looking at these fund balances, it is interesting how it corresponds to some of our LGA cuts. If you look at an early 2000s, you see how, you know, we must have tapped into the general fund to kinda get through with the LGA cuts. Again, we had LGA cuts in 2007, you can see we tapped into fund balance, so. I think it's kind of explainable when you see some of those, uh, valleys come through in our fund balance, why that happened. So this statement is directly out of our latest bond rating, and basically, you know, the comment is a weak debt and contingent liability profile. Uh, you know, I, I wouldn't say this is unique, especially for a regional center like us that is taking on a lot of projects, uh, where we have growth and we're doing a lot of subdivisions. Um, but it is one of the, the things they make on our, our bond rating. Now, some of the metrics that we look at is the debt to value ratio, so that's basically, you know, the value of the entire tax base in the city. Uh, the goal is be- between 0.7 and 3%. Uh, right now, we're at 1.64%, which is an improvement over our last. So it gives you a little, if you're looking at a little bit of a trend, last time in 2017, we're at 2.8%. So that's certainly deemed as a good thing. Uh, the next is our debt to expenditure ratio. Uh, the goal there is not to exceed 25%. We're still trying to figure out where they were pulling their numbers from when they did this bond rating because our 2018 bond rating was under that mark at 20 and a half percent. But as you can see in our, uh, debt profile in our last bond rating, they had us at 34%. And we looked at a lot of different scenarios, trying to figure out where they came up with that number and weren't able to figure it out, so. Um, I think that's something we'll have to watch on our next, uh, rating call. And, you know, the comment that they make in there is, if we start hitting that 50% mark, you know, that may impact our bond rating.
And when, when we looked at that, I think, um, there might be a possibility that they were taking into account some of our large capital costs um, in that calculation, and so I, or, or either that or removing too much from the calculation so that our debt was looking a lot heavier on top of what our expenditures were looking at. I, like Kelsey said, I tried to slice and dice our figures from our audit report, where they take the figures from, to come up with what they had calculated, and I just couldn't, couldn't for the life of me get, get to their percentage, so. Um, I can talk to our financial advisors, you know, um, Baker Tilly, and see if they can come up with those figures or see where they're pulling those numbers from, but again, you know, that, that, we are on the high side, but we know this, right? So we're kind of a growing community still, and we're doing a lot of projects, we've done a lot of financing. Um, but then, at the same time, you'll see up in that, uh, verbiage, it says, you know, that we're retiring 66% of our debt in the next 10 years, which is a positive on our end. So we're accelerating the payment of a lot of our debt, so. Um, although we have a lot of debt right now, we're gonna pay it off fairly quickly.
Yeah, so the last metric, uh, in that article that we reference is our debt to revenue ratio. Now, depends which rating company you, you talk to. Moody's has a goal of 300%, S&amp;P's at 180. Uh, we're at 234, which is an improvement over our 2018 bond rating. Uh, again, depends which one you, you reference. Um, that's why we put it in yellow. I think it's good, it's not great. So again, all these things aren't necessarily to alarm you, I don't think there's anything in here that makes Detroit Lakes unique from like a negative standpoint, cause the rest of the bond rating, if you look at it, it talks about a lot of good things. You know, about our growing tax base and the management, like, uh, Heidi was talking about the, the speed in which we're paying things off, and that's why we still have a very good bond rating. It's just, these are some of the metrics that they're looking at, and I think it's important to at least keep those in mind.
Any questions about that?
Well, I, I guess one thing that, um, you know, they say that we have to be under 50%, ideally, they want us to be at 25%, so. You know, according to what, what they're telling us, that we, we're, you know, we're about, you know, 9% more than what they want us to be, but at the same time, we're, you know, we're still around 50, but it, it kinda tells me that we're gonna have to watch what we do spending on, so we, we don't get much more than where we're at at 35% right now, is what it's kinda telling me anyway. I, I guess I'm looking at it.
It, it's, it's based upon expenditures though too, so it's, it's an odd metric because if, if our general fund expenditures were higher, that, that percentage would go down. Which if you think from a financial perspective, that's not necessarily a good thing either. It's just trying to figure out what percentage of our expenditures is actually debt.
And we were kind of, um, looking at those figures, wondering if in that debt to expenditure ratio, in the debt number, if they were including some of our refunding bonds. So we had made some large bond payments because we were paying off the old bonds with our new refundings, and maybe they had factored in, you know, some of those big lump sum payments of, of the old debt into our figures, which that doesn't seem to me like that should be included in there, cause it's kinda double counting those dollars. So, again, I'm not quite sure exactly where those figures came from, but as Kelsey said, you know, it's just one tool to, to kinda look at. I think it's important to see that the other two, um, ratios that they were looking at both improved, whereas that one didn't improve, so that seems to me like it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, so. Anyway, we'll look a little further into it, but.
Yeah, Heidi, cause if, if they've got something wrong, can, could that affect our credit reading?
Um, at this point, I mean, it, we, we were rated already the way we were rated, um, and they still affirmed our AA
Okay.
Stable rating, so it won't affect anything at this point, but going forward, if we were to say issue some more debt, and then they recalculate it, and then calculate it even higher based on, you know, some figures that might not have been accurate, that would be concerning, so I, I think.
So we're gonna look into it more?
Yes, absolutely.
So Heidi, uh, when you said that we have, uh, we're gonna be paying off 66% of our debt in the next 10 years, but what, what's the total of that 66%?
Oh, we're getting there.
Oh, okay, it was coming up, alright.
Segue.
Yeah, thanks, Ron, thanks for, uh, leading into my next slide here. So kind of to that question, what is our current debt levy? Uh, so basically, all the orange, um, charts there are basically our tax levy for different infrastructure projects, amounts to about a million dollars. The blue, uh, items are basically some of our facility debt, but it's, I, while I have it on this chart and I call it debt, we really haven't issued debt for it yet. It's money we're putting aside for the facility, so. For example, the airport runway taxiway extension project, we've been budgeting $87,500, but we actually haven't issued debt for it, we may not have to issue debt for it, but that's what I'm using to pay off that obligation. We're currently levying $378,000 for the public works facility. We haven't done the project yet, so we haven't issued the debt, but that's a tax levy commitment that we're, we're setting aside. So when you add up that all together, you know, it was about a million and a half. Now, some good news is, from this last time we looked at this chart, our fire hall building is paid off? So that's good news. Now, you know, in the budget mean, we moved some of those savings, right, into the operating side, you know, for other, uh, capital maintenance there. We also don't have other utility debt on here that's being taken care of, either, um, you know, by electric fund, or the, the water sewer fund. These are just tax levy debt. Like, for example, we, we still owe money on the liquor store, but it's not on this chart because we're not levying for it, okay?
How, how many years left on the liquor store?
It's paid off in '27.
Okay.
So, the good news, and you're gonna see this in some of the other charts, um, we do have some debt retiring. This here, the 2003 bond, uh, which is part of Timber Creek, Lake Forest project is gonna be expiring in '24. Uh, the 2007 debt, uh, North Washington, Jackson Avenue, that area is gonna be retired in '24, and then a 2012 debt, uh, must did some, um, uh, not milling overlay, what's the word I'm looking for?
That was pulled up, reclamation.
Right. On Roosevelt, that's gonna be paid off. And then, uh, we also have the overlays that were done in 2016 are, is gonna be paid off, um, I think a year later, so we will have some debt relief, which is reflected. Oh, that's you, right? I was like, how, how'd that work? Um, so basically, if we don't borrow another dime, this is basically our obligations based upon our current debt. So if you look at our 2021 tax levy, again, had about a million dollars that we levied for our different infrastructure projects. This 466,000 is what we levied for the airport and public works facility, okay? So you can see this orange bar drops off in '24 and '25. We see some pretty good debt relief in '24 and '25 as some of those projects come off, off the books, okay? It's important to keep that in mind, cause you'll kinda see that in all these charts. You'd see the biggest factor impacting our current debt is this, if we keep with the plan where we increase our levy by 1% every year for the public works facility, okay? So, in '21, uh, it increased, '22, it's going up by another $60,000. '23, it's going up by another $60,000. And then basically, that levels off, basically for the next 20 years to pay off the debt for the public works facility. So at 2023, that public works levy is gonna be about a half a million dollars. It's gonna be a little over $500,000, which, you know, that will basically cover our debt service, you know, for about a $7 million bond issuance. Okay, that's about where we need it to be, right? Cause we're looking at about a seven and a half million dollar price tag for the public works facility. So the good news is, in the meantime, we're just socking away cash. I think we got about a million dollars in that fund now. That's a million dollars we won't have to borrow for. And that's a million dollars being used for site improvements, buy down our, our debt issuance costs for when we actually do the project. So the other thing I look at is, alright, so that's, that's the hard number of what the debt levy is gonna be. What's the impact to our tax levy? So this is a little bit of history of where our, our past tax levy in, rate increases have been. You know, we were at 9%, 6%, 7.5%, 2020, we're at 4.5%, and this year, we're at 6%. As of right now, for next year, if we increase our levy for the public works facility, which is the extra $60,000, oh, I should probably back up. One of the things I factor going forward is a two and a half, two and a half percent operating levy increase. Now, call it an inflationary adjustment or what have you, but I have to put in some sort of factor of what our operating is gonna increase. Now, unfortunately, I don't know if we've ever had a two and a half percent on the money operating levy increase. Five years I've been here, it's always something more, or maybe a little bit less than that, you know? So thing about, um, you know, two and a half percent basically covers your basic, uh, you know, wage increases, utility increases. Don't really count for any of those extra things for operating. So I put a two and a half percent operating, uh, levy in there just as, as a baseline. For 2022, again, we have the existing debt levy, uh, that we still have to pay, plus the extra $60,000 for the public works facility, plus the one thing I added in 2022 is we're gonna get cut another $97,000 in LGA. So my point of that is, factoring in the LGA cut, factoring a two and a half percent operating levy increase, factoring in the public works facility $60,000 increase. Now, we're looking at a four and a half percent levy increase for next year, and we haven't even started. We haven't even started looking at anything else, okay?
So right out of the chute, we're gonna have four and a half percent?
Cause again, it's, it doesn't take long, right? I mean,
No.
Two and a half percent levy increase, $97,000 LGA cut.
That's 2% right there.
Yeah, if I just move that right in, if I move that right into the levy, and then basically the 1% levy increase for the, um, public works facility. Now, you can see in '24 and '25, with that debt dropping off, if we don't issue any more debt, which we all know is not gonna happen, if we don't do another project, our tax levy would go down. Again, not gonna happen, but that's the theory. So that's the baseline, again, now we plug in our fa- five-year capital improvement plan. Now, a- as John said, this is, this is just a, a plan, right? This is just our best projections. There's always things that move, it's aging infrastructure, something might fail sooner than later, so we, we might have to shift some projects around. One of the things we've talked about before at council level is our special assessment policy. Uh, we have some uh, assumptions based upon what our current policy is, as long as that holds pat of how much we think we're gonna collect, so that's all factored in to, you know, basically projecting what the, the obligations are gonna be going forward. The other thing is, you know, we're not out of the regulatory woods yet either. Yes, we got the wastewater treatment plant built. You know, we're doing our MS4 permit right now, and we have that, uh, the total maximum daily load, the TMDL study for St. Clair Lake. We gotta show every year how we're meeting that, th- those metrics for reducing our phosphorus load for our storm sewer. So, things like Washington, or the Washington Mall parking lot, will probably buy us some credits for that, so maybe those projects have to get moved up. There's a lot of things that could impact us. I don't even wanna talk about chlorides. I mean, you know, i- if we ever have to do anything with our water treatment plant to reduce chlorides, that's a whole nother issue, but. So again, those are risk, but still, um, you know, it's our best plan as of today.
Kelsey, I've got a question for you that we talked about, these two new water towers. Does that come from the utili- does the utility fund have money for those stashed away, or? Or who's gonna end up paying, paying for that? Is that all utility with increased rates, or?
It's, it's all water utility, and I, you know, Vrenell can maybe speak a little bit more about it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, all the improvements you're gonna see on the water side will come from the water rates. So, we've got scheduled for a new cost of service and rate study on the water side in 2022. We've had about 1.5 million in the queue for the last few years for painting the existing tower and the stand pipe, but we've deferred that, cause we know that we're gonna have to do something with those structures anyway. So we've got a little bit of a running start on it. Uh, exactly how much we can put to those projects, we don't know yet. But as the list that John and Kelsey laid out, every one of those infrastructure projects that are scheduled have got a water component and a wastewater component to it. So we've gotta put that into our cost of service and rate study as well, and then find out what the end result's gonna be.
Thanks, Vrenell.
That's a great point. So we're gonna talk a lot about tax levy impact, but absolutely, every one of these projects, every one of these reconstruct projects or these extensions has a water and sewer rate implication too, cause there's a component of these projects being funded by the utility bills. And storm sewer.
And storm water.
Storm water, which is on the to-do list to re, you know, basically redo that ordinance and look at that funding mechanism too.
Is the Pelican River Watershed District getting tougher to work with as far as expensive and all, some of the requirements, or where, where are we at on that now? Cause I, I'm reading the minutes and s- and some of that stuff that comes, and, and I'm just wondering how's that gonna affect us down the road with things that they're looking at?
How do you wanna answer that one?
I'll take a deep breath. Um, yeah, I mean, the short answer, Ron, is the watershed has some very difficult regulations. Um, there, there's sort of two components to it, a water quality component and a, and a rate control component. And it's challenging. I mean, the watershed has very stringent requirements, and that, there's no other way to say it, but it, it absolutely does translate into dollars for us, significant dollars. I mean, in fairness to the watershed, we have our own requirements, um, that we have to implement relative to our, our MS4 permit. We are required by the state, ultimately comes down from the federal government through the state to us, to have our own set of standards. Now, our standards aren't as stringent in some regards as the watershed. They're still relatively stringent. Where I have the most difficulty with the watershed's regulations is that in most circumstances, you get at least some grandfathering for existing streets, existing impervious surface, existing infrastructure. You don't have to either comply with the requirement, or it's some reduced sort of requirement, meaning you do the best you can. When you're in an existing neighborhood, it's pretty hard to meet their current requirements. And I, and I don't wanna sound like I'm, I'm beating up on the watershed, they have been, you know, good to work with in many regards, and trying to work through some of that stuff with us, so it's by no means been one-sided. I mean, they've, they've been fair, but yes, there's real cost with it.
Yeah, as, as a non-engineer, how I would explain is, on some of the new subdivisions, I mean, the sizes of ponds and different things have to be larger, be, to meet their requirements, that, there's a certainly a cost to that. Um, and that was part of the reason why we ended up changing our assessment policy. Now, half of that stormwater cost is being assessed, half is still paid by the storm water fund in the city. Um, again, on those linear projects, the reconstrucks, to go into an existing neighborhood and to now put in treatment is
Very limited what you can.
Very difficult to do. Now, again, to their credit, we've talked to them about, is there more regional improvements we can do? That's a better use of our, our money, um, probably more impact for treatment? And they've been receptive to that. And again, part of that is, we gotta do that anyways.
Yeah.
Cause again, to meet this TMDL requirement, we're gonna have to make some of these improvements.
But, and a good example is even the, this project, the museum and community center project. It's easier for us to comply with some of the requirements on, on some of the site projects compared to the linear neighborhood, street and utility jobs. There's just really limitations on what you can do there, but they have been receptive to, okay, we need to do the museum thing anyway, let's do some really good treatment here. Uh, if we have to redo the mall parking lot, we'll get some good treatment there. And they've been receptive to it.
So with those costs and expenses that they require, I mean, would it go to the, to the, the contractor that's, you know, building the lots out there and making the area, but with that, with that But would that, would that wholly go against them a hundred percent? Or is it the city sharing some of those costs with these ponds and stuff? I mean, it's.
A new, new subdivision. So think new housing subdivision projects like Long Pine Estates or Tower Heights. Those projects, our, our policy says right now that the city participates fifty percent. We pay half of the stormwater. That comes out of our stormwater utility fund, which is always sucking air, for lack of a better term, but Heidi probably has a better term than that, but fifty percent of those costs are ours, Ron, on those new subdivision type projects. On existing stuff where we're reconstructing roads, which is the vast majority of that capital improvement plan, those costs are a hundred percent ours against our stormwater utility fund. Now, I want to caution you when you start looking at the worksheets and you see a cost for stormwater, that's collection and treatment. So don't look at that dollar and go, well, that's all treatment. I mean, a lot of that cost is tied up in the collection system itself, the storm sewer.
So are we going to have to, as the city going down the road the next five or 10 years, look at increasing those rates that we can with, with all the new building and subdivisions and all that?
I mean, I think that's always on the, on the table for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the same with, you know, Vrenell, when he does his cost of, you know, cost of service rate studies. We have to do some sort of a calculation like that as well to make sure that we're covering the costs of these large projects and, and as John mentioned, that fund is not extremely healthy financially to begin with. So yes, I would imagine we'd have to have some kind of increases, but I think first, before we just start jacking up those rates, we wanted to look at the fairness of how we actually calculate and bill for that stormwater utility. And that's the process that we're in right now. So once we figure out how we should be billing for it, then we'll have to figure out what those rates and what those fees will have to be in order to fund all of the projects that we have going on.
And the other thing I point out, and Kelsey mentioned this, we're going through the reauthorization of our MS four permit right now. And long story short, that's getting much more complex and intricate, and it's not getting easier, meaning that's going to be added burden on public work staff for monitoring, inspecting, cleaning ponds, more street sweeping, cleaning storm sewers. So there's, there's operational costs, and that has nothing to do with the watershed.
So I think that's to John's point there, and I want to answer your question, Ron. So it's not just new subdivisions are going to be driving the pressure on our stormwater utility. It's the reconstruct projects and it's also the operating expenses that John just talked about. Those are all things paid by the stormwater fund, so that's going to be potentially driving those rates.
I guess for myself as a taxpayer, I'd rather see a little increase every year instead of having nothing for five years and boom, the hammer comes down. And you say, geez, what happened here?
And don't forget, when we change that assessment policy, I just wanted to make it clear too, is so we put half of that, that new subdivision cost on assessments. Well, now like we're seeing in Lake Forest eighth edition, the developer is saying, what do you mean, my assessments are going to be forty thousand dollars? That's because, you know, we figured out about four or five thousand dollar increase. Increase in the assessment because we're putting that stormwater cost now on the developer and on those assessments. So that, again, we're just shifting, right? I mean, that's an additional cost for new subdivisions and home development.
And, and right now, most of the people in town are saying, geez, we got this new system going for us and we're looking at a bill that's not bad at all. That's a pretty good deal, but it looks like coming down the road here because of this other stormwater stuff. It could, that's could be where the whammy comes.
Potentially. Aaron, you had his hand raised. Aaron, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, my question is on these developers that are coming in here. You're saying the state's paying a hundred percent of this. Why can't more be passed on to them?
So right now, the developers pay basically all the infrastructure cost. The only thing that the city participates in is half of the stormwater cost. And then. We just did. I mean, basically, the city used to pay a hundred percent of the stormwater cost, and we just switched the policy a year or two ago to fifty percent.
Yeah, and we used to.
I think right now we should increase it because right now, real estate comes at a premium. Instead of letting these developers have their way, maybe they should pay a little more.
That's certainly a discussion for the council. It's always that balancing act of trying to keep lots affordable. So, you know, so if you're at assessments at forty thousand dollars and you add another five thousand dollars on, you know, that's, that's the trade-off.
Well, real estate is hot right now. Detroit Lakes is a growing community. I think we should pass more on to the developers. That's just one way I'm looking at it.
Sure.
Detroit Lakes is becoming an unaffordable building community because of the assessments. You know, and I work for a company where we build in five different communities, single-family houses, and Detroit Lakes is by far the most expensive community we build in because of the assessments. And if you keep passing that on to the developer, there will be no more homes to be built.
I don't agree with that.
Discussion for another day. Do I move on to this chart here? Because let me explain here. So it's the same chart you just saw, but now the, the purple bar is the new debt that we're adding in from the CIP, okay? So again, there's a lot that goes into this chart. There's a giant spreadsheet that has just, it's just ugly to look at, at all the numbers in the background. So again, there's some assumptions, you know, we're making interest rate assumptions, right? Trying to figure out what that's going to be. Special assessments, how much we're going to collect. You know, how much the utilities are going to pay. And then, like John said, I think our numbers are better in the earlier years. Further you get out, the fuzzier it gets, especially you don't know what construction costs are going to be. So just keep that in mind. But ultimately, again, in twenty twenty-one, well, we got our big project this year is Willow and Fraserian Homes, right? So that's a big component of this additional hundred and eight thousand dollars of debt that we're taking on next year. Now, hopefully John's estimates are way off and bids come in really low and our debt levy is less than that, but for right now, that's what's driving our twenty twenty-two debt levy increase would be like the Willow project, right? Twenty twenty-three, again, goes up a little bit more. Again, if you go back to the CIP, the big one that's driving that is Willow Springs, right? Now, subject to change, right? If for some reason we don't do Willow Springs or it gets postponed a year, things move around, right? So again, in twenty-four and twenty-five, you see some of the existing debt come off. And basically it starts, it also gets backfilled with some other debt in the CIP. Now, one of the things we're looking at is you kind of have this dip and this rise again, right? Is there anything we should do to try to level that out? You know, I think that's one of the things that, as we continue to work on this over the next few months, any discussion to trying to level this out at all? What can we do to level that out? You know, if you look at overall increase, if you look at our current debt levy, again, with these two bars combining, you're about one and a half million. Gets a little scary, you know, within seven years, you're looking at it not quite, but almost a two million dollar debt levy. All right. Back to this chart. This is your tax levy increases. Again, these are existing tax levy rate increases that we've had. And the other thing we haven't even talked about is, is our tax capacity growth, right? I mean, part of the reason why we've been able to do some of these levy increases is we've seen the tax capacity growth. So we don't know what that's going to do in the future. I mean, a two and a half percent levy increase, if we're growing by two and a half percent each year is, is sustainable, it's palatable. If for some reason our tax capacity froze, that gets even more complicated, right? But looking in the near future, remember that four and a half percent levy increase that's timed out for twenty twenty-two? I'm saying right now, based upon these projections, by the time we do the projects this year, this year in twenty twenty-one, again, Willow being the biggest one, and we put that debt on, we're looking at about a six percent levy increase next year before we talk about adding personnel or adding parks or anything like that. That's a bit alarming. I'm hoping bids come in really good and, you know, we can that debt amount won't be that high, but right now, that's what we're looking at.
Do you have a chart for that unknown stuff right now too, that what you kind of expect that to be beyond the six percent?
Say that again, Ron.
Do you have, do you have a chart with what you expect it could go up beyond the six percent in the next two, three years? If we're at six percent right now, before we do anything else, how much is that anything else going to end up costing us?
I don't know. I mean, we haven't, I, I don't know what those other things are. You know, again, I'm estimating a two and a half percent operating increase, but if for whatever reason, if it's more than that, then this number is going to be more than that. Now, in twenty twenty-three, again, just to maintain covering those, that increase in debt, looking at a four percent levy increase in twenty-three, again, just to cover those obligations. Again, twenty-four and twenty-five, we have debt relief. So what this tells me is is there anything I can do to move things, just delay it, just a couple of years to, to level that out a little bit? All right, that's something to think about. So just kind of wrap this up. Basically, again, what you see in our, our bond rating is our level of debt is manageable. We have good reserves and they like the fact we have a good plan on how we're going to pay it down. Those are all positives. You know, one of the factors in all this is the public works facility. Again, we've been increasing that levy by one percent, fifty-seven thousand twenty twenty-one, and we're looking at increasing by another sixty thousand over the next two years. We do have debt relief coming up in twenty-four and twenty-five, which is good, good. It's a good scenario. So the proposed schedule, as we just laid it out, if we go and do the CIP, just as we showed it here about an hour ago, yeah, it's doable, but like I said, it's a little, little scary. Look at the next couple of years of what the required levy increase is. Again, something to be aware of. Again, over the next seven years, again, I think it's within reason to get that, that levy up there, but it's not without some cost to it. So you know, again, I just want to, the reason why I do this exercise is so we do everything in some sort of context, right? We don't want to drive the proverbial car off the cliff. We don't want to keep doing projects and just not look ahead a little bit. So again, I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer here, and I think a lot of this, there's shows good ways forward and how we can pay for things, but ultimately, we just got to keep it all in context, how to, how to manage it. So I'll stop there.
Can we move Willow Springs back a year? Would, I mean, would that help level it out?
It would, yeah.
I don't think the neighbors out there would mind.
So we've been telling the neighborhood for a long time. I mean, part of the annexation is we have it in the CIP for twenty twenty-two. So the earliest we would do it is in twenty twenty-two. And you're right, it's a mixed neighborhood, and I, I think you're always going to have mixed opinions in that neighborhood. That's always the case when you're bringing utilities into an existing neighborhood. I, I think you do the informational meeting this year and you, you take the temperature of the room.
I think we move it back a year.
Yeah.
And, and our justification is exactly what we're talking about here today.
And I think we've got enough people out there that would probably even tell you, you could maybe move it out two years. Because I, I, I've had a lot of contact with people out there that, and they know a meeting's coming up. I would say we should have that meeting sooner than later. So we could get ideas of city where that would be too.
The biggest problem is the pandemic. I mean, we've done these Zoom meetings, right? We did the Zoom meeting, the hearing notices for Willow and hardly anyone came.
Two people out of ninety properties.
Yep.
That's a challenge.
Because we really want to have a discussion. It's always easier when they're in the room.
We'll have good, good turnout.
To have that.
Maybe by midsummer, things look, we, we hope, they, they look different where we can maybe have an in-person.
So should we hold that thought, do you think, for a while and?
I agree with Ron and Matt. Let's table this thing for a while.
I, I think we owe, I, I'm not disagreeing that we should move it out, so I don't want to sound like we shouldn't move it out. I think that's a good, good possibility. I do think that we, we in some regard owe it to the residents to have the meeting. I, I, I would hate to not have the meeting just simply because there's a lot of folks wondering. There are folks that are in favor of it too. And so you have to be, I think we have to be aware of those people that we're providing them an explanation as to why. There's folks that are on septic and wells that are potentially limping along, waiting to see if we're going to do this or not, whether or not they're going to spend fifteen or twenty thousand dollars on that. So that, that's my only comment to that, that I'm not opposed to moving it out. I think that makes good sense, but we should still have the meeting.
Let's have the discussion with them, but maybe by midsummer, we can have an in-person.
You know, we could maybe have it out there at Long Lake Park like we did with meet the candidate forum where people are out, we had a lot of people are further candidate forum, and that'd be about what the neighborhood would be. I could maybe do it out there. But I, and just a suggestion, that's possible.
Yeah, I agree. The virtual stuff is pretty tough to get people engaged in conversations, so.
I realize this might not be popular, but the other item I think we got to talk about is too, the, the public works facility and the timing of that. Again, I think that's going to be part of the, the facility plan, because, you know, that's, that's driving up that levy over the next couple of years too, by putting that sixty thousand dollar increase each year and again, just something we got to talk.
Why don't you and I talk about this a little bit, and then I'd, I'd like to have a separate meeting, talk about these facilities, even though it's, you know, entwined with what we're talking about here, but maybe sometime later March.
Sure.
Is that okay with the council?
Yeah.
Because we, we need to do something on this public works building. We talked about City Hall, talking about the Washington Ballpark, things like that, so. Any other comments on, on this business, Matt?
Looking at twenty twenty-two, I mean, we have one point six scheduled for Willow Springs, and, and I, I agree with that mentality of let's meet and decide from there. But also looking on here is Highland Drive. And we got a price tag of one point five scheduled in there. Is, is that going to happen? Is that? I mean, I, I know it's a lot of variables with that road itself.
Here's what that could look like, and, and again, a fair amount up in the air, but there, there's a little bit of a hope or light there, more so than say last year. We, we've trimmed the scope of the project to be focused just purely on a street improvement project, rural section, improve from what's there, make it a bit wider, but, you know, we cut over about a million dollars out of it. Some of that's predicated on what we're able to do or not do in the way of stormwater, but we're hoping to go after a local road improvement grant, which could fund, I think, one point two five million of that one point five. So you're left with a, a relatively small amount to come together on between the city, the township, and, and the county has sort of entered the equation here with some route swapping and so forth. So all of a sudden, that looks like a, a fairly palatable one that would be a big impact to any one entity. Does that answer your question?
I mean, so I'm just thinking globally for twenty-two, I mean, whether it's Willow Springs or whether we take a one point five Highland Drive and that drops down to five hundred thousand. I mean, now that swings the numbers and levels that out pretty good right there. There again, there's just so many variables, it seems like, even for being a year out and then trying to forecast five years out.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now, my projections are even that one point five million dollars of Highland Drive. I have a relatively small city share in there, assuming.
Things come to fruition.
So the one point five just isn't the city share then?
No.
Gotcha. Okay.
No, that would be, what you're not seeing is the detail here, and it would make your heads explode if we put all the detail there. We're, we're counting on hopefully one point two five million in grant.
Gotcha.
And the city and the township and the county sort of picking up the, the rest, which isn't going to be a lot. You know, we, we potentially could defer West Lake too. You know, if you look at ones that are, and West Lake's not near as tough condition as Highland Drive. Highland Drive is getting almost impassable. Now, there's, there's reasons not to push West Lake Drive back either, because we've been dealing. There's reasons not to push West Lake Drive back either because we've been dealing with sewer backups and things like that too.
How is that going? Are they still having a lot of problems there?
Yeah, it comes and goes. I don't know if, I mean, it you get a call or two every year, then it kind of settles down. And then it comes back up and this has been a 10 year long cycle and we need to do something.
Solely our problem, you know, we were going to do that and you had some neighbors that. Thought the city is going to pay for everything when they found out that they're going to have to pay a share, then they didn't want it anymore. So I mean, that was.
Well, where we.
Kind of their own making.
Where we left it is is they wanted to do it. They were ready. What happened was. We started talking about doing the sewer improvements and then there was discussion of, well, if we're going to do the sewer improvements. We talked about trail and street improvements and so it was like, okay, we tapped the brakes and looked, re-scope the project. And the county was on board with with that larger project and doing more comprehensive improvement through there. So that actually was worth more the breaks than the property owners this time. You're right, in the past, Ron, they've said no, but this last time around. They kind of went, well, we need to do something. We can't keep.
Yeah, the wives got tired of cleaning up sewer mess.
You got it.
Well, maybe Willow Springs is where we should. Hope we can work something out with the neighborhood.
And you know, and looking at other things, you know, we've been looking at this thing out along Lake for so long, you extend it out. And I don't, I don't know if we're any further on that project than what we've been over the last couple of years too, because. Those people are a lot like what we have where in Willow, a lot of them don't even talk about it. So I, you know, maybe, maybe we've got things that we think that we really have to get them, but if we got all this extra land out there and so much. Road space between the next houses, I mean, it just makes the cost just makes almost impossible to make it a reality until we get more people wanting to live out there, I think. But I think that's something we've got to look at too.
Yeah, and right now, both those projects are pushed. 25 and 27.
If, you know, if it was all filled up with houses, that'd be one thing, but there's a lot of empty spots out there waiting for something.
I think it's important for us to keep those types of things on our radar though, so that, you know, it doesn't all of a sudden, you know, we take it off and then it all of a sudden pops up and. It's not a surprise. You know what I mean? It's easier to keep it in the plan and keep pushing it out a little bit if we have to. Rather than all of a sudden needing to put something in there that hasn't been in there in the past. So. I I understand where you're coming from, but I think it's important for us to make sure those stay on our radar so that.
But out in that Long Lake area, that was the good lots, all of a sudden became gravel. And that's, that kind of put that whole project. Those are going to be great lots because they're going to be great building lots, but when that Alfred came in with all the gravel stuff, that just killed that whole project out there. But maybe that'll get better once all the gravel's out in the next 20 years, but a lot of gravel still being taken out over there.
Any further comments, questions, Natalie?
So when you put these projects together over five years, is there a general inflation rate on road projects? You know, if you kick some of these projects down the road. What at what part do you lose that benefit of doing them now versus?
Yeah. It's hard to predict that because it construction's more fickle than say the price of milk or things like that. I mean, heck, even look at where gas is at now compared to where it was at and gas has a huge, huge impact on construction costs. Bidding climate, how busy are contractors, all sorts of things kind of come into play. So, you know, if I'm being realistic in terms of how do I do this, I look at pretty much current value right now. Some of the ones that are out a little bit further, we will just kind of lop on an extra 10 to 15% just because we know. By then, costs are probably going to go up, but I've seen year to year, one project done this year and you could have a very similar project the next year that's cheaper. Not usually the case. Usually it goes up, but it's fickle.
Thank you.
Does that kind of answer it?
Further questions or comments? Anybody else?
I certainly don't have any problem with deferring projects if if that's, if that makes more financial sense.
I agree, JB. All right, we have to be able to afford whatever we're going to do so that we don't. Break the taxpayer.
I think I completely agree with that. I mean, I don't think we should do projects that we we don't want to afford at that moment or can't afford. The only thing, you know, is when we delay projects, then other projects get delayed. There's kind of a domino effect because we don't want to. You know, stack everything up and then end up with a log jam is, you know, as in a few years.
It's a balancing act.
Right.
We don't want the city to start crumbling and falling apart. And we want to keep taxes down, so it's always going to be a battle.
Yep.
Anyway, I think we accomplished what we set out to do today, so unless I hear any further comments, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. And we're going to probably call another special meeting to talk about facilities in the very near future. So with that, the meeting's adjourned.